I'm gonna call the IBISB meeting, committee meeting together. Today is Tuesday, January twenty nine, twenty nineteen. This is a working session of the committee. Stanley Stern is present, Denise Loth is present, Rob Page is present, Kathy Sollin is present, Kerry Gupston is present, is Stephanie Peavy here?
Not yet.
Stephanie Peavy is not here. We're joined by David Smith, our council liaison, and Nana Williams. David Smith would like to make a few comments, David. For yours.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted everybody to know, it'll be coming out soon, but the twelfth of February, we are having a study session specifically on the, to make it in lay terms, Jen Luria's job.
Is it a work session?
It is a work session. And I believe right now, a potential title is, it depends on, it's up to the council, but it's Tourism and Marketing Manager.
What date is that?
The twelfth, that's Tuesday. And it will be at the Senior Center.
Five thirty?
At five thirty. There will be an agenda item on this coming meeting because two councilman, council people, I apologize, asked for it to be put on, but in fact, I would urge IBISB and the business community to come to the twelfth, so that we can actually have dialogue. And you can have input, I mean, obviously, you can do that at the next meeting, but not to the same extent because of time constraints. So I'll be putting it out, but and at that point, I hope to have the statistics that I needed and wanted, which talks about what tourism does financially for the city. So that's what I wanted to bring up, so thank you, Mr. Stern.
Thank you very much, David, that's good news, and the committee, we will discuss a little bit more of it, but I think the committee will be very much present at that work session. Our discussion beginning today is on Slack, and Rob Page is gonna lead and introduce, and he's a lot of love.
We have with us today, he has come all the way from Batwater Coffee.
Bathtub.
Bathtub Coffee.
Bathtub water.
That doesn't sound good.
Terrible way to introduce you, I'm sorry. Morgan Oxley has volunteered his time to show us the app that he, that he suggested we use at our last big meeting of all the merchants. So it was Morgan who raised his hand and basically got our organization involved. Our organization now has sixty-two members on Slack, and it has become pretty much indispensable, I don't know what we'd do without it. And I thank Morgan for coming tonight, and he's gonna show us a little bit more about how Slack can be useful to the Bisbee business community, and if it is as useful as I believe it can be, I'd like to see us solicit the input from the city and make this a bona fide communication tool to be used to communicate with the business community.
Morgan, I think the ball has been put in your hands.
Well, what I'd like to say about this is that one of the things that I really enjoy about living in Bisbee is that I can walk down the street and talk to somebody, and there could be an exchange of information, just sort of casually and quickly, and it's, it's something that Slack really easily replicates, is that fast, informal communication that allows us to sort of be like, is this person any good, is this person not any good, is there, you know, how do I, how do I find a tailor, et cetera, et cetera, like, all of these things that I would need to wait to run into somebody in order to do, we can do more or less instantaneously on this platform. So I hope that, that is our sort of established, but that's what I think is really, really wonderful about it. I'm gonna just sort of jump in with this and show you guys the basics of this. I have a couple of different Slack channels that I'm a part of. This one is Bisbee Local, there's not that much activity of it, on it. This is the Slack channel for our business, we don't have sixty-two people, we have, I don't even, I don't know how many people work for me right now, to be honest. But we have, I really apologize for the quality of the screen here, but let me just read these. These are channels, these are different discussions that we use in different ways, and I wanna go through these real quick just so you guys get a sense of how things can be used differently. Some of these are less, less used than others. This one, for example, is our A-frame, so basically, I'm supposed to be posting on that every night, so that our A-frame is getting updated every morning by whoever opens our shop. We have an announcements channel, which is just a, basically, where we're pushing through process updates. So when things change at the restaurant, we're kind of, we're pushing it on announcements. And one of the things that I really like about this is every time, like, this says, hey guys, we created a waste log channel, please record any waste events here, including spills, wrong orders, or expired products. And then there's a little icon that says to confirm, and then it looks like I had five people confirm that. So that allows me to go back and see that people have actually read it. This is a nice tool for us to be able to see that people have actually seen what we're, what we're talking about. Does that make sense?
That is a good question.
Of course.
You have a channel for your business.
Yes.
And other people have channels for their businesses, or whatever.
Yes.
So how do you prevent somebody from looking into your channel?
So, so they're actually workspaces, so there's a, there's, this, this is our, our business is actually called Cup of Swords. So this is, this is called the workspace. If we go down here, we'll end up in the Bisbee Local workspace. And you have to be invited into that workspace in order to get access to it. So it's not, it's not necessarily an open thing. Some groups, you can set up a Slack group that's totally open, but we, we can set it up. I mean, right now, I believe that Bisbee Local is set up by invitation only. So, not sure that's true, but we can, we can definitely make that happen. So, so there's these workspaces which people have to be invited to, and then within that, you can set up different channels that are either locked, so that you have, like, I know that Rob has a channel where only his managers are present, so then they can discuss whatever they need to discuss there without worrying about being seen by anyone else.
And that's set up through the admin, right?
Yes.
So there's an admin for each channel that you set up?
There's, there's an admin section for each workspace, and then there's also admin for each channel. So there's different settings for each channel within the workspace.
Now, to follow up. When you post something in your particular, whatever channel you posted at, do the recipients or the people on the network get a push notification or a notification that you posted something?
If, generally speaking, the standard setup is that it will, it will give you a push notification during the, during normal business hours. At night, it will, it will tell you that that person, if you're trying to send something to somebody, it'll say, oh, this person snoozed notification, so you won't see it. So each person can set up when they wanna get push notifications, or if they wanna get push notifications. So I have push notifications set up for whenever, but I recommend that my staff not get push notifications at night, so that I can send the messages without feeling bad.
Yeah.
It's, it's really easy to change the settings.
Rod, then let me ask you a question before you go on. So you have sixty people on one channel maybe, and you have several different channels.
We have, we have sixty people that are joined to the workspace. The workspace is Bisbee Hospitality Group, and then we have about fourteen channels. And some of those channels have been set up just by my managers, to just speak with, like, front of the house staff at Santiago's. They wanna talk amongst themselves, and they don't want the entire operation to know, you know, really don't need to know. So you can set up a workspace to just be your little club.
A channel.
Channel, I'm sorry, there's channels to be a, to be a private channel. Admins generally do that. We've had some conversations about how we establish administrative privileges to the, to the workspace. That's something that is open for discussion, I suppose. But, but all of these, these channels can be set up based on the importance, or the, sort of like, as a way that I talked about the last time we met, was the, a Chamber of Commerce, we're so, we're in a sense attempting to establish what the Chamber of Commerce did without the Chamber of Commerce, right? And so the Chamber had all these committees, and I kinda see these channels as committees, essentially. So you have Bisbee After Five, you have Destination Bisbee, you have Bisbee Foodie, which is all about food, you have wine, you have art, retail, et cetera. So we try to keep the channels as descriptive as possible, without having so many channels that it just muddies the waters. And you can join any channel that is of interest to you, that is made available to join. So say, for instance, you wanted to join art, you would click, there's a little button, a little square, a plus sign, click on that, it makes all the available channels there for you to join if you'd like to, and then you would join that conversation. And then when conversations take place within that workspace, or that, that channel, you would be notified if you set your notifications up properly. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
Do you get inundated with notifications?
You can, you can unless you set your notifications up. My notifications are set to silent, because we get about, right now, we're at the point where we're getting about, during business hours, seven to ten conversations every ten minutes. So mine are all set to silent, but it highlights over on the left side, if you hit that, there's a purple bar over here on the left. If there's a conversation going on, that, that channel will be highlighted. So you'll know something's happening in art, or something's happening in Visitor Center. And when City of Bisbee, if they decide they wanna communicate with us like this, say the City of Bisbee puts out a notification, that, that bar will be highlighted, and you'll know there's a message from the City of Bisbee.
You actually message me, so that, so we can see that.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so I can, and you can message individuals as well. So, so for instance, you want me, I'll message you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you can see that, that Rob is typing, there's a tiny little right at the bottom, which is really nice to be able to see when stuff, it's very, very small.
Is it purple?
So the
No, it's very small.
Right down here, it says, Rob Page is typing, dot, 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 and then, so, I, we can't read. But, but what you do see is that, actually, so you can see that there's a green button right next to Rob's name, that, that means that he's online right now. Actually, shoot me one more message.
So it's kinda like messaging.
So see, yeah, see now my name now has a one, so now, now he knows that there's a message to him.
There's a message to him from you.
Yes, so it's very easy to track, and one of the things that I often do is, if I have a message that I'm, that I wanna keep track of, I just go over here and I star it, and it changes the color of it, so that I can visually see that that's something that I haven't dealt with yet.
That you want, okay.
I didn't know about that.
So you can hire, so you can do a higher P of?
Yeah, so for example, I'm, I'm new, so my inventory system is, is not as smooth as I'd like it to be. So I, I have my team shoot me inventory things as, as they're like, oh, we're kind of running low on this, or if I notice something. And I will always come through and just, just star that stuff before I, before I've ordered it, so that when I go to order, it's, it's really obvious to me what
So it's, yeah, that's, that's what you have to order.
Right. You can see that I don't even know what this means, so. So to kind of come back to this, just to give you a quick rundown of, of our channels. Again, we have an announcements, then this is something called Bible Study, which is basically us working on our process. Like, we get our team to make suggestions about how our process can be improved. This is a communication between me and my manager. This is our general channel, and I've got like a, I was gonna send them this big long idea, and I was like, well, maybe I shouldn't have sent that, and I haven't actually erased that yet. But this is just a general channel that everything starts with. This is, we were doing, I made a deal with the Pilates instructor next door, so that my team has access to the Pilates. And it's great, everybody should go to her Pilates class, it's amazing. This is a channel called Hashtags, which is not very much in use, but again, kind of collecting stuff. This is the inventory channel that we talked about before, and this is the Photos channel, 'cause I'm encouraging my team to, to take photos in the shop, and especially of our new food items. This is Andy making a, how about that?
Beautiful.
So, so we can use those on social media, or, and marketing materials, et cetera, et cetera. Then we have a schedule here, it's just our schedule, just gets pumped out there. And this is the Waste Log, which is something I think we created yesterday, to just sort of track events, you know, waste events in, in the space. One of the things that I would like to say about channels is that it's very easy for organizations to develop too many channels. You can see even here that we have a couple that aren't getting used, and so I kinda try to go through every month or so and be like, well, if this isn't getting used, then I'm gonna kill it, and I killed a couple channels in the last, in the last couple days, just because they weren't useful anymore. You can just end up with this long, long, long list of channels that aren't being used, and it's, it's confusion for, for everybody. So we've got what I think is a really nice set of channels here, it's not overly complicated, and I think we should be really careful about expanding those too quickly. So as Rob said, there's, there's really two things going on here, two main communication tools here. There's channels, which are like public discussions, and then there are direct messages. And direct messages are communi, private communications, so like, Rob and I have kind of an ongoing conversation about this. I was asking him some questions about this meeting, and there's a conversation between Rob and Suzanne and I. And then, you know, there's not a lot of activity going on here, but, but you can, it can be one person, it can be two people, it can be five people, it can be whoever you wanna talk to. So say, for example, you wanna message two different people, you can just go and go here, go to Direct Messages, you know, and then you can select who you wanna talk to, and you can create that group of specific people, so that there's an ongoing conversation between that set of people. And that's totally private, that's closed, nobody else can get into that without
And then once you're done with that, then you, you delete it.
You could, I mean
If you're not, if it's not useful.
Sure.
Talking about a time-related subject in ten days, and you're talking to three people, and then you're done, then you delete it.
Yeah, and so, so one of the things that we
That would be a channel?
That is a direct message. That's like a, that's like a group chat, if you will. If you ever get these group chats from people that you would rather not be talking to, or I don't know, my mom always sends me out for group chats, and I get like fifty text messages from people I don't even know. But, but it's like a group chat, it's a, it's a closed communication between a specific set of people. So one of the things about Slack is that the first ten thousand messages in any workspace are free. And then it will, once we hit ten thousand messages, it'll stop, it'll start deleting older messages. So that's a decision that we'll have to make at some point about this, whether we wanna pay to keep, you know, to have that extra storage, or if we just care about our most recent ten thousand messages. But I would say, I mean, I rarely delete messages unless I'm just like, I can't believe I said that.
I can tell you, if, if the city's involved, you have, we have to keep them.
We have to keep all of it, okay, that's, so the cost is something like six, I think it's six sixty-five per sort of, per person, per month. So that wouldn't have been a few.
Ten thousand messages are a lot of messages.
Ten thousand is, is not insignificant, but I would imagine you guys are running up against it.
No, we're not, we're not really too worried.
Can you archive them?
Um, not without, so basically Slack's business model is, we'll provide this tool for you for free, but if you wanna be able to access your whole history, then you need to pay for server space, essentially. So I think, I mean, I think they're extremely generous in what they've, what they've put out, it makes sense to but, but it's really useful also to be, to be able, because it's really easy to search this. So say, for example, you know, I, like, I'm just gonna go up here and search for this is a, I'm shameless here, no, there's nothing, so we haven't been talking, no. So this is, we created this thing called a Pizzadia, so this is the conversations that are talking about that, that particular keyword. Does that make sense? So, so there's, you can really search for anything, you know, I could search here for Rob, for example, I'm sure something would come up, but like, that is a functionality that you don't have on, in a Facebook group, or in a, in a, it's just, it's really nice to be able to have access to that previous information. I, I go back and kind of, fairly frequently.
Let me ask you, may I, I can just go in so I, that I understand for the retention, because unfortunately, in government, they all that weird.
Yeah.
So if we have a channel.
A workspace.
A workspace, and Bisbee City Biz, okay? Then, and everybody's invited to contribute. Okay, when it hits ten thousand, then the city is paying six sixty-five, whatever it is, a month, but does, if Rob is, if he puts a message in there, does he have to pay that too?
Every active user has to pay six sixty-five a month, and I, I, we'd have to look at what the exact pricing is, but
Because some people use it more than others, for sure.
Yeah, and, and so what it comes down to for me, or at least what the conversation that we had, is this is a, this is a tool primarily, well, and again, I'm speculating here, but the way that it seems to make sense is this is a tool for, for business owners, concerned citizens, and that there's dues, you, you know, that, that we're paying dues to maintain this platform, and that's, that's this plus whatever else we might need to do, but, but it doesn't make sense to me that, that the city, or that any individual would need to pay for it. It seems like everybody who's using the platform should pay to maintain.
Who's gonna collect the money?
So every, every time you get
So you need a coordinator, if we're talking about making the city wise, you're dealing with your firm, and Rob's dealing with his firm. If you talk about making the city wide, then you need a coordinating function for this. And you mentioned that every morning, you go back and you look and reload, or whatever. Explain to me the administrative side of this.
It's, it's not, I mean, collecting money is its own joy, but in terms of administering, administering this, it's, it's not very complicated for us to just keep it going. We just need to pay the bill, essentially, collect the money, and then pay the bill, and I think we can, I mean, I, I think I could probably pretty cleverly set up those
How many, I think we have maybe a hundred and fifty chamber members, Fred, how many do we have?
Yeah, yeah, at one time there, when I left, it was a hundred and forty-five confirmed.
So, so in lieu of chamber fees, you know, without having a chamber director, we could sell this based on the fact that it's a communication tool, and we wouldn't have to ask the City of Bisbee for anything, unless the City of Bisbee had a, had a function for paint, or something like this, on behalf of the Visitor Center. But it wouldn't be more than, you know, what, seven, eight hundred dollars a year.
Good luck.
I mean, so, six hundred.
What else?
Wait, wait, wait.
No, six hundred, six dollars a person, it'd be six hundred dollars a month.
Oh, six sixty-five a month, six hundred and sixty-five dollars a month.
Six sixty-five, yeah, six sixty-five a month.
So how would you get the money for that? You, some horse sucker would collect it?
There's a, there's a couple of ways that we could do that.
There's actually a tool called LaunchPass, which we could use to set up, administer this. I'm not super excited about it, because it charges a, a fee. The other thing we could do, I think I'm willing to take this on, I'm not a hundred percent, but what we could do is set up a, basically like a an electronic payment. Again, I'm totally spitballing, but I, really, really easy to set up an electronic payment, and then I could, or have somebody on my team go through and check whether they've, they're, they're up to date, and then just, I would just message them, be like, yo, like, please make your contribution, and if they don't make their contribution in X number of days, then we just, just go.
We're really talking about dues.
The workspace.
Right, right.
We're talking about dues.
At the point, at the point that we wanna archive messages over ten thousand.
This is, I mean, if we, if we blow up, and we have a hundred and fifty or three hundred people, and everybody's talking all the time, that point could happen really quickly.
And then it becomes
So everybody that sends a message
It becomes very valuable.
Everybody that sends a message to this
That's on, that's on the channel, yeah, that's invited and included.
That's counted towards the ten thousand.
Yes.
Now, with the city having to keep everything, can't they do like, just copy this somewhere else and
That's what I asked.
Yeah, that's actually a, a deeper, probably a deeper question. And then if, again, if the city is the one that's required to maintain this, then maybe the onus would sit on the city to maintain it, not the business community. Just, that's, I know that's down the road, but
Well, Morgan, it would seem like they have more than the one K option that you mentioned.
Yeah.
There's gotta be some kind of bulk payment that companies have.
I mean, there's
Different payment plans.
Yeah, and, and if we were, if we were talking about adopting this at a, at a municipal level, then we should probably talk directly to Slack and see what kind of, what kind of, what they can do to do that work. And I haven't, I just haven't looked at that.
Yeah, of course.
I think they're close to going public too.
Yeah, thi, this company is huge right now. This is, I mean, in Silicon Valley, everybody's using Slack.
Oh, it's exploded in like three years.
Yeah.
It's crazy, it's amazing.
I call it the Facebook killer.
Yeah, it is, and it is, it's, it's 'cause it's better, it's just, it's just way easier to use.
It would seem, I don't know the mechanics of it, but if you wanted to join into a, a citywide announcement kind of thing, why not just set it up that you have to pay your dues to do that?
But don't we want everybody to communicate?
Yes.
Yeah.
Then they're not going to.
No.
It's gonna be all we can do to get these flip phone people to figure out.
Be careful, Kathy, be careful, Kathy, be careful.
Really, 'cause like, they are really limited, a lot of our merchants are very, very technically limited.
But again, you're selling something that is the alternative to the chamber, so we're, we're trying to dilute all of this down to something that is an alternative
I know, but most of these people weren't chamber members to begin with.
Kathy, we'll see.
Well, no, I'm just suggesting that the technical capabilities need to be looked at, and there probably needs to be some major training.
Right.
Kathy, you're right.
You're right.
You're, you're, you're exactly right, and I think, first thing, we'll take this committee, and then we'll have to discuss that, because there's gotta be a format to get the business community educated, and it's, although I'm, at least I'm beyond the flip phone, but I'm pretty much a dinosaur, and I, and I, you know, and I realize there are people in our business community who are gonna be in my shoes. So there's gonna have to be a, a public education for this, and that type of thing.
There's a, there could be a channel called Slack Training.
And, and I'm, I'm happy
See, I'm at the point where I don't even know how that hook came up. I've got this far.
I can help.
That's good, that's good.
I can help.
Good.
And I, and I can help too, and I think, you know
I'll trade you fixing your jacket. I'll still do your jacket for free.
Thank you. I, I also, I think there's, there's wisdom in just opening this up for free, and just seeing if we can get some adoption before we, before we worry about the, the paywall. I think we can get there.
Well, people see the value.
Yeah, yeah.
It's about eighty dollars a year per person, I think.
Yeah, and, and again
Now, she's still the only person that's paid your dues, and it's almost February. Gotcha. Yeah.
Who paid their dues?
For Bisbee After Five, and there's forty-five people, and I've gotten one check.
No, no, I thought you were talking about the chamber, I was like, oh, my God.
You have access, you pay for access, if you don't pay, you don't get access.
But then it's not a good tool for the community, because not, half the people aren't using it.
Then they don't use it.
But Fred, the point is to let people know there's a, a street closure, there's this stuff going on.
Let me, we're, we're in a committee setting, so I wanna be careful here how we function. Kathy, you're raising good points, I mean, they're, they're legit. Why don't you, Morgan, take us through, get us up on this, so we then can discuss it, knowing we're, we're, we have an opportunity to use it.
Sure.
And then, then we'll discuss further.
That sounds like a plan. So what I'm gonna do is, several of you I, I know are already on here. At, at this point, Rob and I are administrators of this space. We can add or subtract administrators as we see fit, but I'm gonna go down here to this button which says Invite People. And again, I just, so we've got channels, we've got direct messages, and we've got Invite People, and there are also all of these add-ons that we could, you know, you can create polls, you can make to-do lists, you can add little videos, you can do all kinds of stuff with the apps, which is a whole nother game. But so, I'm clicking here on Invite People But so I'm clicking here on invite people. I'm gonna take this list and I'm just gonna send everybody an invite. Does everybody have a um, a smartphone here or or a laptop?
I can do that for you if you'd like to keep talking.
Well, his phone's smarter than I am.
Are there any questions? Outstanding?
See, I'm not. I'll just download it.
You got me. Okay, so this app. Can I help you some more, Brad? I'm just needing a little bit of light, that's all. I'm just gonna go ahead and send out everybody's.
So so this is how simple it is to invite people and and one of the decisions that that would need to be made is do we want to invite people or do we wanna set up a link that anybody can join? Um, and that link can be always open or it can be open for several days or several weeks or several months and then and then it'll close. So so it there's a lot of a lot of uh flexibility in terms of how people get invited. And it's also extremely easy to remove people completely from from the workspace. So if if somebody is trolling us, we can we can.
Do you wanna tell that to people? That's the administrator that that said?
The uh
Yes.
Yeah, the the this government side again is that
Yeah.
it can be set up where people are invited or they apply, if you will. But we they, nobody can be turned down.
Right. You you cannot delete people off the system. If the city's gonna use it, it's gotta be open to everyone.
Yeah, the 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 court has even now ruled that my personal page uh on Facebook, I can't I can't even get rid of anybody on my own personal page because I'm allegedly a public figure.
Is there? Is there um? Is there some kind of caveat for a paywall? For example, if 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 it is required to be a member in good standing, would that change that equation at all?
For.
Yes.
Uh huh. Well, it just would mean that e- as long as somebody was paying their dues, if you will, you can keep them out.
You you, okay, but but if they're not paying their dues, then you have a way to 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 get rid of them.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, right. Exactly.
Okay.
Well, that that's still fair. It just has to be equitable for everybody.
Okay. Sure.
Without discrimination.
Okay, so this page is gonna change. I'm still there.
I would go go to your email. Now, everybody should have gotten an email from
Oh, you're in the email now?
Yeah.
Okay.
The email's just going to get you, it's basically just gonna
Join now.
Identify you.
Yeah, and and I we just saw that that some folks are already on, so that this that may get complicated as well.
Yep.
I did not get an email.
Okay, um.
Is it, do you wanna have that?
Can I?
You might guess.
Full name.
I was already in your system.
Create password.
You are already in the in the system?
Yeah.
Okay.
Denise and I signed up right away and sent messages and had nothing back.
Okay. Um, let's see. I don't I don't I don't wanna mess around too much in your email, but if you know where they um okay, let me, let me.
I have no idea. I I'm
You're good.
Literally, I'm lucky they they able to answer the phone.
Hi, Slack Bot here.
Yes, you have Slack, you have Slack Bot.
Okay.
Okay, I'm I'm I'm.
I'm at high Slack Bot here. This this is um, I'm functionally illiterate with uh Google phones.
That's why I have.
Um, I didn't, I was already in it already.
Let me see.
But I didn't do meditation.
So what you're gonna see if you're if you're you're not in?
Rob already invited me.
Oh, you're in.
So you have this?
You're totally in. So now we can go here and we can look at channels.
Okay.
Local threads and then let's click on channels. And then any of those that you wanna join and just click on that.
You've already created a menu chain.
I created, yeah, for me, but.
And Morgan?
Yes.
Just cause I saw your uh
Am I supposed to join here Kathy?
Your message here. Excellent seamstresses in Nako.
Okay.
I'm not supposed to do it.
And on the Mexican side?
This is, yeah, that's a very good.
There's one at the museum too.
Yes. So you're already in.
Right.
Okay.
So these are the only channels I can see.
Sure, so click on, i- is everybody in or?
So can I join yours?
Who's not in?
Huh? You can join if you want to.
Are you there, Phelan?
That's probably done with because I mean, I don't know, if I can get all my flip phoners to get smartphones.
Yes, it's a good time to see a Slack Bot. So we're gonna click on.
Stanley's has a hundred dollar phone.
It's it, well, it's it's a tricky to get a.
Oh, okay, so now what I do is?
So then we're gonna click on that.
Well, there's no activity on it, so.
And then you you've got, you mentioned with all these.
Kathy in there?
All of these channels that you may wanna join, just go ahead and click on one and say confirm, and then you can join that channel.
Wait a minute, now that's something else.
So you're now gonna get, and then any other ones that you might wanna join, just go ahead and click again on channels.
All thread, oh, channels?
So we're gonna, are you on all the?
I'm on this plus, well, I'm on those.
So then if you go to click on channels?
So which one?
Oh, channels.
Yeah.
Oh, you you've already.
Did you get it?
In, you're already joined this.
Yeah. I did.
Oh, no, no, oh, you're interested.
You also were signing up like I was.
Yeah, we're for our nation vote in there.
So this is a list of
How about City of Bisbee?
Of channels, you're part of the Bisbee After Five, and if you wanna join any of these other channels, just click join and you'll be able to join us.
Right. Okay, got it. So I hit, okay, so this is actually a link to that, okay?
Yes, yes, so.
Morgan, you have my stuff.
Bisbee videos all written on?
I do, I'm where, well, do I?
You've either given it away or you've done.
No, it's just there. We'll we'll get into it in a second. Um, and and did you did you discovered how to join channels?
Not yet.
Okay, so I'm gonna click on the workspace here.
Okay.
And then where it says channels, just click on the word channels. Perfect. And then now you've got a list of all the channels that I've created so far and you can join any of those.
Cool, okay, thank you.
So I joined City of Bisbee and Visitor Center.
Excellent.
And Bisbee After Five. Actually, that's because I go to Bisbee After Five every couple of months.
And and again, if if you if if you guys wanna create a either a a group chat for Ibisbee or a channel?
We can't.
We can, we open meetings more.
Oh, okay, well.
You can create.
I don't know, I don't know, I have government, yes, I don't know this.
Is that my phone?
This is your phone. And so I need somebody with, is it, who is um, does anybody have a Google phone?
Like an Android?
An Android, I do.
I'm not, I'm have no idea how to even turn this on, so.
Oh, from the side.
Oh, it's.
Stanley showed me.
Okay.
Upright.
So what I need to find here is um, is the app?
Oh, where is it?
Well, I I'm trying, I guess I put it in my email yet.
Manager or a place where we can.
Yeah, store.
Playstore.
Let's see.
Hey, I don't need it to be a local because I'm not having your business.
And so, so how does she get to where to the invite that you just?
I guess I can leave it random.
It's nothing on.
I don't know.
Well, here.
If you go all the way up.
Yeah, I I just, right. Playstore.
Where you get all these? The channels? And then?
I don't know.
Well, he said he already downloaded the app, so it should be on his phone.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, he said he already downloaded the app, so it should be on his phone.
Oh, did he? Oh, okay.
That's just right here.
Cause he said he and Denise were in it.
Okay. Good, so let's
Oh, so now.
Figure out where
To City of Bisbee.
Where the where would I find that?
Yeah, here.
Yeah, okay.
Communication to and to our city webpage please, such that, okay.
Yeah.
It's got a lot of games.
Games. Um, perhaps in tools?
No, it should be.
There should be a button that says apps.
Yeah.
I mean, he I don't even.
Sorry, this is not, I'm I've been on Mac since I was eight, so.
Don't be sorry. Stanley, you downloaded the the app?
Yes, what question? I always get.
Then he should have that, that.
So he's got, he's already has one other Slack channel.
He should have the app logo on there then, shouldn't he?
All right, don't. So enter the address that you that um that you.
And I told him just to download.
I wonder, he doesn't have the app button. I don't see that anywhere.
Well, it's you you go to Playstore.
Kathy, what do you think? You like it?
I like it. I'm just thinking about the personalities involved.
Because you're an IT person.
Yeah.
You know, you know what your Google account is?
Absolutely.
I don't have one.
But created.
You had to, if you if you downloaded, yeah.
A Gmail. You have a Gmail?
I don't have a Gmail, no, I I belong to Cable.
Do you have?
Okay, but but.
Did you get the email?
If you if you downloaded the.
Um, can you see if that's in your email?
No, I I'm telling you, watch.
Uh.
Sign in.
You see that's, well, that's, you know, we want the invite your teammates, try it out.
Interesting.
That's a different one.
Did you make password for it?
No.
It hasn't, the passwords change.
It should just, confirm my email, put my email and invite my teammates.
I use that as my phone call every once in a while.
Welcome to Slack. Is there, can we go back and see if there's?
I don't see that. I need to see my business with two point three FTEs.
No, but it's an interesting, significant tool for business community.
What what is, Stanley, what is your phone number, this phone?
Um, I actually, what I would like to do.
Five two zero six seven eight seven five four six.
Workspace? Yeah. Oh, no, what, I'm sorry. That workspace is, we tried this and then.
Uh, you've gotta have a Google account. That's what I.
Interesting, okay, I think we may need to reset that.
Okay, well, we'll send you another.
Are there other questions at the moment?
Yeah, there's.
Is everybody
Who doesn't have a Google?
In?
I wanna select it.
No, no.
But that's all right, you go on, because you know, I don't need, I don't need to be in my, more importantly, my, the committee's.
I'll send, I'll send further. Okay, and that's.
I'm just looking at what it is. But I I tried to.
Didn't use it for anything. And you you were already, any questions?
I know.
I don't know if they're for me, but I tried it.
Yeah, no, you're you're.
A lot of people still do. Half the people that volunteer at the shelter shop.
Is there?
Yeah.
Fred, can I?
And they're not, you know, they're bright people, they just don't, that's just not something they're vested in, you know?
Oh, wow, that's true.
Oh, for your own business?
That's.
Absolutely.
Oh, we, while you could ask admins to create a channel, wouldn't put just Pantera over it?
No, I mean, plus I wanna communicate with my staff like you do yours.
That would be your own workspace.
Workspace, workspace.
So Fred, what's going on there is?
What's your? I'm gonna send you a little bit.
Were you already in the?
Bisbee Wired.
On my laptop, on my desktop.
Okay.
I signed in the day you gave her thing and I put a message in and never got a chat.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, but I went to to put this on like my computer and went to confirm it, said, no, you still don't have to use that.
That's probably what was happening.
Interesting. I
Yeah, okay.
I don't have an answer for what, so you're on it on your phone, but not on your desktop? Okay.
You know, but wait a minute, I know one, cause I only downloaded it on my phone.
Good, okay. You should be able to go back to that. Well, it wouldn't, well, I don't think that it would. Or I wouldn't trust it to be, but again, I'm on Mac, so I don't, I don't really know. But what I would do is go back to that original email or go to the email that we just sent. And then on your on your desktop, then go through the process again. You should be able to quite easily log into both.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Both. I mean, I, it's to me indispensable to have it on my phone and on my on my desktop.
I'm just, I'm one of these people, I I happen to like having a four people.
Yeah, no.
Cause I don't have Barbie doll fingers.
I don't know, I have big, big dinosaur hands, I can't.
Yeah, as if any of us have Barbie doll fingers.
Um, now, the the main issue with your phone is that we can't download the app because you're not logged into your Google account. So we have, the first thing we need to do is log into your Google account. And once that's done,
See, that's what Stan's is, same problem.
So we we'll make that happen.
I'm I'm really, my 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 concern is from a committee aspect.
Well, he's talking to Stan.
Now that you've had a chance to play with this a little bit, what do you think of it as terms of a tool? Denise, what do you think?
I haven't played with it enough.
Kathy, what do you think?
Um, I think it's gonna require training.
Absolutely, it's gonna require training.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be great. I I'm thinking about it for the animal shelter.
I do too, yeah.
You know, and that's a smaller group and more more of them are younger and more technical, you know, cause we use, we text all the time.
Have you, um, when your IT days, have you ever done major training?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Give me a fear, what would you do? Would you invite the business community to a meeting?
Boy. It might be easier to just do a s- to, I mean, we'd have to probably talk to everybody and get them on board for just intellectually first to make sure they understand what we're doing. And then maybe do some small group meetings, like maybe one at Bathtub Coffee one morning and, you know, get people to sign up and you know, one at the Bisbee Coffee Company another morning and just, I don't know. It it's hard because people aren't.
Well, you've got you've got email addresses of what, forty-five businesses who are at their meeting? So you send out a notification that there's gonna be a demonstration of Slack. I don't know whether that's been done or not, but um, at at the coffee, someplace where the screen is big better than this. Um, and then see how many people show up, and then you start build from there. If there's five people, it's five people. If there's fifty people, it's fifty, and it's um.
Also, I I think if if we just start communicating on it, you know, talking to each other, it will it will gain traction.
Well, and if people invite people that they regularly talk to and start using this instead. You know, like if I talk to Maryliss all the time and we try to use this a little bit more frequently than we use texting. You know, and then you get somebody else to get on it, you know, on your side of the street.
Last night was a really perfect example, um, you were all texting me, I was getting text messages from four or five people. Unfortunately, because I, we haven't communicated in the past, I had telephone numbers, but I didn't have names, and I didn't know who was texting me. So that's why with Fred, I was like, I apologize, I'm sure, you're very important to the, to me, I just don't know who you are. And uh, but but on Slack, you know, there could be a specific channel, we could just direct message each other. Um, honestly, I'll 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 be honest and say that when I first got this and Morgan introduced me to this, for the first four or five days, I was I was more than reticent. I was thinking, okay, this guy is not, he's got more tech techno savvy than I am, I'm a little ticked off, but I'm I'm getting in this, I'm gonna figure this out. And before I could introduce this to my staff, I really had to understand it, so it was just me and my managers, and my managers were angry at me for the first three days. They're like, oh, gosh, there's one more app we wanted to get onto, right?
Mm-hmm.
But I'm telling you honestly, after about, after about a week, they started getting used to it, comfortable, and what what it takes is constant communication. It takes constantly working the app and going back and forth, and then as other people start to get involved, it really becomes indispensable.
And do we have some lights?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Me again?
Yeah, they're right over there, Mr. Page, right over there.
Morgan, if I wanted to set up a s- a workspace, how, where do I do that?
Set up a workspace for for your.
For the animal shelter.
Is it create workspace thing?
Yeah, it very easy, in fact, if you look at your app, um, so go.
Oh, add workspace.
Oh, I see it, okay, got it.
And then it's super simple, just, super, super simple. So then this this is.
That's your pilot.
Be available on um, a laptop or a computer.
Yeah, absolutely. It's very helpful on a bigger screen.
Yeah, I spend more time on my computer than I do on my phone.
Yeah, and it's, and you, when you set your status, if it sits down at the bottom, you'll see a little, a little icon pop up, so you'll know you have messages going on, but you don't necessarily, it doesn't, it's not distracting. It doesn't draw you in like Messenger or something else, for me, it's not as distracting.
You can turn off the sound. Notification, though, it's just.
I've gotten to the point where where text messaging and mess Facebook Messenger are almost irritating. I I don't even, I, just because Slack is so much easier to use and I I communicate daily with so many more people on Slack. Um, but there's other, those other, they're just basically annoyances.
Well, there is, you know, for just for general information, um, there's a series of books, it's generally Mac oriented, but it doesn't have to be. Um, they call it Take Control of, you can take control of changing your operating system and all kinds of different stuff, but they have Take Control of Slack, they just put it out. It's fourteen ninety-five and it's a downloadable thing, so you can read it or you can print it out hard copy and stuff. And I'll send that link to um, Stanley or to um, you to put out if you see what I'd like that.
And sometimes Naina will will distribute it amongst the committee.
Oh, I found it?
Um, I mean, as a committee. Would you like to proceed forward with this? And by proceeding forward, looking at how we would adopt this for the city and how we would adopt it for our business community. What do you think, Denise?
I think we should try it.
Anybody have some rejection to try it?
Dave, do you think the city would embrace it or?
Well, I think that, well, of course, the quick answer is yes, but it it also is, um, is it going to accomplish the purpose that it's out out for? And and if we can accomplish that purpose of communicating with the business community, then absolutely, that's something we need to do.
Or perhaps the city, the the business community needs to present it to the city and and essentially show you how viable it can be.
So I think with all these like notifications and whatnot, that's great, because I I don't know if I'm normal or not, but I don't go to the City Bisbee website to look for things.
I don't either.
Um.
I don't go to any website.
And this is a way to alert people that there's a message coming out, and I think it's much better than just having it in a passive website that. Some people at least don't use.
Well, it it would have to be in addition to because.
Oh, absolutely.
The web, the website unfortunately is a, is 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 basically a.
Well, I go there for contact numbers or contact emails or whatever.
This whole conversation starts, excuse me for interjecting, this whole conversation started um, out of that public meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Was that some business people didn't feel that they were getting adequate communication from the tourism manager.
No, from the city.
No, from the.
Like, no, 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 that's not true.
Oh, that, but, there was a.
It was it was the tourism manager.
It was from Jen, they were, a couple people expressed, I don't know what's happening, traveling.
I learned about writers and all this, you know.
Anyway, it came, that's that's how we got to this point, is that it was a communication mechanism between the city.
I brought up the fact that street closures were happening and nobody knew.
Well, there's both, but there's both.
But the Jen thing is more of a report, I mean, Alona used to send a report, that's what Fred misses. You don't sit on this and write a monthly report, that doesn't make sense.
No, no, no. That's not, that's not true, Kathy.
Okay, Fred, what was my? Wait, well, let's keep it within the committee. Um, Rob, you wanted to take the lead, what do you think the next steps are to be?
I think, go ahead, Morgan. There there's a.
Let's talk about next steps.
Okay. One one of the things that, can I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, yeah, Mr. Chairman, can?
Can I?
Yes, certainly.
Oh, just, um. One of the things that that would need to be discussed more is the form for how to, the culture of this could easily not be productive. And so a further discussion that needs to be had is some some guidelines for how to have a constructive conversation on Slack. And how to kind of quietly minimize the pieces of the conversation that wouldn't be productive. So that has to be part of adopting this, is actually discussing how the people in this room and the early adopters are going to behave on this, so that we can establish a culture that's productive.
That's a really good point.
And and.
How do you propose to do that?
So far, it's been, we started this, what, December, January? So December, January, we don't have anybody, but I think uses me and Anna.
Yeah, Suzanne.
But, and Suzanne, so there's only four people, but it it ta- it takes people wanting to become actively involved, just like the Chamber or any other organization. There has to be a couple of people really spearheading the involvement part of it. I I I can almost guarantee that when we get everybody that showed up at that meeting to participate in Slack, that your answers, the the answers will be there. We'll be able to to take the next step, I think that's gonna take a couple of months at least, and it's gonna take us actively getting out into the community and sitting down with people. For instance, in my office, I have a, I have a sixty-five inch television screen mounted on the wall, and my my laptop is connected to that screen. And last night, I was prepared to to show everyone, walk everyone through each individual step and answer all questions. And because I'm in the building seven days a week, I'm able to do that, I think Morgan's able to do that, we make ourselves very available, and then each person within the business community. Almost has to domino that interest and that that enthusiasm for this as a method of communication in lieu of whatever else may be out there. This is just the the one thing that is useful in lieu of anything else we've been able to 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 get going, but we really haven't been able to get anything going. So I think, I think it's an easy sell, but it's gonna take all of us on our own.
I used the term proselytizing at our last meeting.
Yes.
And that's really what we're gonna talk about.
I think that if we kind of focus on two elements that were brought up at that public meeting. Information from the visitor center of tourism and information from the City of Bisbee and try to develop those two workspaces?
Mm-hmm.
Channels.
Channels. More channels than than workspaces, but yeah.
Yeah, channels. And 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 really start doing that and not do the bit, the the personal business side, you did that for us to show us how the the different things you can do. But I think if we just took those two as a focus and whoever Jen's replacement is, or even Brenda, you know, sending information out on the tourism side. If we had somebody from the city side.
Could the city do that without adopting this necessarily for a a test period, say two months?
Do exactly what?
Could they just communicate via the visitor center channel? If we if we, we have a visitor center channel established.
Right.
Could they, through the, through your visitor center, just send out information? Without, it's a, you could have, I don't know, I don't know the relationship between the city and the visitor center.
Well, it's.
At 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 the.
Okay.
No, it it is, that's a visitor center annex.
Right, okay.
Brenda is a shared employee, she is paid partly from the museum, and we have a memorandum of understanding with the city, she's a museum employee.
So technically, she could.
And and the and the City of Bisbee is paying her visitor center work.
So she could communicate.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, she's already doing that, she's the one that does the, uh, puts all the events and things up on the website.
Oh, great.
Um, and that's why I was thinking of her from that side, and then if they, something more like road closures or whatever, things like that, from the city side. Because I I really see from this, you need somebody on it, and it's, Facebook might be dying, but Facebook will never get off the ground unless there's someone behind it.
Are you interested in?
And I think this is the same thing.
In, I I think downloading that? And when you.
David, do you think?
When you, hold, one second, and when you put something out on the um, website to also put it on to Slack?
Mm-hmm, I can do that.
That's kind of like your agendas go off.
Okay, what 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 we'll do then is, uh, as Naina updates our, road closures and so forth go under the website, whether they're looked at or not. But we, I will, um, I I can ask her, because I don't have to go through the city manager, she's ours. She she works for us.
Okay.
So I can ask her to, when she puts it on the website, to uh, put it on that Slack, to the visitor's center. That's what, that's where we want it.
Right, right, yep, visitor's center.
Or or why wouldn't you create a City of Bisbee?
Channel.
There's only, there's only one name.
We have City of Bisbee and we have visitor's.
Why wouldn't you put the? The road closures and things on the City of Bisbee site?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I mean, and and using the City of Bisbee site and getting people used to that.
Sure.
As a way they're communicating with the city.
The more valuable the information in the beginning, the more we will draw.
Well, the first thing is gonna be the, is to putting in new utility poles on Tombstone, that's a big, big thing. And that's something that can be communicated, and here we could use Slack.
Yeah, we're gonna have road closures, um, coming up on Tombstone Canyon and uh, uh, we have a proposed schedule.
Are there gonna be pow- uh, power outages?
That'll be very useful.
I would, that's what I meant by saying, that kind of information on the City of Bisbee site, you can do that? And visitor's center tourism on the visitor's center site?
And if it doesn't schedule the stuff at night, they do it like at on Saturday.
Is it two times?
The two hours. Well, they.
A couple of things.
Um, that happens.
I think I think those two ch- two channels are very, very valuable. I would also say that in terms of creating adoption here and getting people to use this, we also need a quote unquote user-created content. Which means we need to be able to communicate with each other, and this comes back to to my culture point, which is, um, one of the best ways to encourage communication, I I I uh, I did need a tailor. But I also wanted to do that, um, to kind of demonstrate that that's, that that's a thing that we can do if we ask each other questions, and even if they're a little bit, um. Back of house, um, it's useful for us to be putting those questions out there so that so that we can respond to each other. And the other thing that I would say is just as a general rule, um, ignore negative commentary, just ignore it. Just don't respond to it, don't, because this isn't a forum where somebody's in your face, that you need to talk to them, you can just ignore it, and therefore.
I'm I'm the positive kind of.
Well, what about, what about using the um, hotel industry and the inn industry? Where they can notify if they've had cancellations and openings and things, that to me seems.
They already got something like that.
But it's manual and you have to call.
Oh, okay, but yes.
The visitor's side.
I I mean, I'm looking, I'm looking at applications.
Right.
That will be immediately addressed.
Right.
And one of them, I think, would be the lodging industry.
Some of the lodgings will do that on Facebook, but it would be great to to get everybody, because like, I remember if I see that El Dorado Suites just had a cancellation. If somebody's in my shop and they wanna find a place to stay, you know, so just that, you know, so we can all be much more customer service oriented if we try to.
Yeah, we have, we have people at the museum too.
Yeah, and you know, I tell them to call the visitor's center, but sometimes it's at six o'clock at night and they're not open, so.
So I I I see that as, I'm I'm looking at ways to start this that make sense to the to the community. So you have the business channels, you have the government channels, if you do the lodging channel, how do we yet?
I like your idea of a general channel.
Well, you know, you might want a lodging channel for lodging people to talk, but I would think you would put the announcement on the general channel, so the antique dealers.
Absolutely.
And the restaurant owners see it, yeah.
Know that, know that there's a vacancy available.
Because we don't want people to have to go to fifty different channels. I mean, if it's generic information that everybody in town could use, it should be on a main channel.
That that channel can get very clogged very quickly. For for me, for example, Bisbee Lodging, the way that I would use it as as not a lodging person is to kind of ask on Monday or Tuesday, like. Hey, guys, what's the weekend looking like, and hope that people will play back at me, so I can kind of, you know, I can, I can adjust.
I I got a call for eight rooms, I've only got four, do you have four available?
Sure, yeah.
Exactly.
But see, I don't wanna be on that channel.
You don't need to be.
I wanna be on the one that says, we just had five cancellations for the weekend, so how do you?
I I think it's gonna be very hard to get business owners to share that particular.
Do you see what I'm saying?
Oh, I don't think so.
They do already.
They do?
They would probably do it on a Bisbee lodging site, but if you if you ask them to go to another channel to to post specific things, you just make it more time consuming for them.
Well, maybe we could just train ourselves if you if you have that, just to pop up in the Bisbee lodging site.
You know, I I don't wanna be funny, but Kathy makes a good point, if I'm a, if I'm in the lodging business and I have three cancellations, I want the business community to know that I have available rooms.
You could have a cancellation channel. Sure, you could have a lodging cancellation and booking channel, yeah, I mean, anything that is relevant.
Fred.
I'm I'm looking at ways to start this up, that the business community says, oh, yes, this is good, we can use this.
Right. A- another, another thing to do would be to just use general quite liberally until until things that clearly fit somewhere else.
Where you see trends, yep.
They can be moved somewhere else.
Because I re- I was thinking like a lodging channel, because Jen is not here, Brenda spent hours calling lodgings for eight fam tour guides coming up. And this would be a much simplified version, where she can send out saying, we have these people, this fam tour, and I need this.
Yeah, does anybody have four rooms available?
Because it was, it was a long time.
Well, it would be nice, it would be fun for us.
We need to iron a couple of other things out. Rob, you're taking the lead, would you find out what Slack wants to charge in municipal utilization in this?
Yes, I just made another help.
Because I I think, I think getting down to that, because if we're gonna have dues on this thing, we've gotta know, because when we start discussing it with the business community, I don't wanna give them a surprise.
Right.
Right, and I I guess we won't be the collector of dues.
No, we can't be.
No, we're 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 not about ready to collect.
Could I make a suggestion then?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, um, well, we're, what you were talking about is a a bigger picture of businesses getting together, Quayside Chamber, uh, different areas which the Chamber did do. Of the lodging people stuck together and and uh, didn't necessarily share, but uh, getting past that. And then a aspect of that is putting the city and city business in there to go out to all of those other entities. So, we'll we'll start on on our end, providing some data to, some information. My suggestion is that while you're working on uh, developing the other aspects of it, that we kind of use that almost as a beta test. To then gather that information and bring it to the mayor and council, to say, okay, we've been doing this as a beta, you know, uh, and and uh, we've been, uh, we've got a. By by doing this, we're now reaching, when Naina puts us out, we're reaching a hundred and forty businesses.
And you can put on the city of Bisbee.
Right, uh, or or whatever, and.
Because it's already created.
Then get the city behind it that way. Rather than us, I I don't wanna bring it to a council and then we'll have all these questions and some potentially saying, ah, it's not worth it, others.
Why do we even have to bring it to the council?
Because it'll, if the city's going to be uh, involved in disseminating the information.
Then the council has to know.
Then then the council needs to know.
Well, that's fair, and and what we're doing is we're opening it up communications with the business community.
Right, we're doing exactly what the business community is asking.
Exactly, um, I like the idea of a beta test, I would tend to run it at least ninety days, guys.
Okay.
From my experience of beta tests, it's the one thing I have experienced in this whole thing, but I'd run it for ninety days. I would begin to sign up people slowly and get them on, um, I think Kathy's point of very small groups may be helpful. I know, I know you've trained in this area, Kathy, so I'm relying on you for help here.
Well, I I've still gotta learn it, but it looks pretty straightforward.
Right, exactly. Exactly.
Don't you have to kind of worry about, not worry, but like, let's just for the heck of it, say that Kathy can create a channel that is Bisbee lodging. And somebody else can create one that's uh, um, lodging in Bisbee. And they don't communicate and.
If it's in the same workspace, the admin's.
The admins, the admins, the admins have to set the work, they have to set the channels up. So there has to be some, some bit of of administration.
You need an umbrella.
That administration can be, we can, as we're going down the line, determine who the administrators of the channel would be or the workspace would be, and then that would come to that, say, committee. And we'll be saying, okay, these are the channels we need to have.
Part of the beta test will begin to show us how we do the administration, what's involved, and 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 will give us a picture of how fast people come onto the system, how they use the system. If we do a correct beta test within ninety days, we will have a good, fairly good picture, which we can discuss with the council in a very positive way. Rob, you're taking the lead, and the committee stands ready to help you.
Great.
I mean, I I know Kathy's experiencing this, Denise on her way to Australia can send out things.
Sign them all up.
Sign them all up.
Go through the plane.
Maybe we, maybe we could each get one more person, you know, as a goal, get one more person who we think is gonna be active.
Okay.
To, and invite them, can we invite them or do you have to invite them?
We have to invite them. You can, you can send me.
So we can send you their.
Well, you could, you could go through this to City of Bisbee and.
This committee can send the admin, the person you want to invite.
Visitor center and ask to join.
Well, I know, but they don't know we're doing it.
Correct.
So right now, a good way to get some more activity going is to add twice as many people.
Right, exactly.
You know, and. You know, and.
So you have to communicate them with Rob?
Yeah, we just shoot him, as, as long as you have their email address, you're cool, right?
All it is is email.
Okay. I have a question. I, while we're doing this, I set up a workspace for Bisbee Realtors.
Okay.
Now, can I invite them? Cause to keep it private, you know, just our little group to talk about.
You're just a Bisbee Realtor, so you can, as you can administrate your workspace.
Yeah, you're the admin, so.
Yeah, so I can go ahead. Okay, good.
So whoever sets up the workspace is the administrator?
Of their workspace, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you, so you set up visitor center and City of Bisbee, so you'll be there.
Those are channels within.
Those are channels.
Those are channels.
Within the Bisbee local.
So then can we post stuff on those channels?
You can.
Like real estate?
You can, because you're invited.
Okay.
So you're a member of the Bisbee local workspace.
Okay.
So if you think of it as workspace and then channels.
Okay.
Right? And because you're in the workspace, um you could, if you have a Realtor, say Bob, and Bob wants to be a part of our, of Bisbee local.
Right.
Just send me Bob's email and I'll invite Bob.
But you can add Bob to the Realtor.
To my workspace, yeah.
But you can add your own workspace.
But, but the same, at the same time, it might be, if I'm understanding, a better idea to have a, instead of a workspace Bisbee Realty, a channel Bisbee Realty under the, under the local.
And it's, we do.
Which you do.
Which, which they do. But then you wanna have something where they talk about boring things like use path and appraisal and weird stuff, yeah.
Yeah, this would just be like our boring stuff. But we would use the channel that you set up to the real estate channel to advertise possibly.
To advertise. But that's what I, that's what I was trying.
And like, hey, this is off the market or going on the market or.
Yeah, yeah.
So then everyone can.
It's about defining your audience and the audience on Rob's.
Yeah, that's, that's where this becomes really, really useful.
I got.
Obviously, what happens always, especially like in Facebook, is everybody, an email, everybody got on, it was very useful, his email, and then the advertisers came.
Oh.
And then the advertisers just went boom, right? And it creates an entirely different dynamic. However, these are still just the people we invite.
Right.
So it's not, you're not getting an ad for Levi's, you're not getting an ad for, you know, American Airlines, you're getting just the people that are within your workspace.
Good.
You can snooze those people too. So if I don't want to get real estate information, I don't have to join your channel and I don't have to go to your channel to see what's in it.
Well, we could set up some criteria too where, you know, like if you wanna look at real estate information, go to the real estate channel.
Right.
But the real estate agent shouldn't be posting all of their sales on the general channel, cause that's gonna, I mean, we'll have ten thousand posts.
Yeah, right.
Right, no, not the sales, just stuff that's new, what's new on the market.
Yeah, yeah.
Or, you know what I'm saying, but we might wanna limit that, like if I'm gonna have a sale in my shop, that might not be appropriate for me to put it on.
That's kind of where the admins come in.
Right, and that's where we need some guidelines.
Right, we have to kind of select, select the admins, sort of the rules.
I guess we do need to know what the guidelines are.
Yeah, because we could blow the thing up in five minutes.
And then there's also the question that came up earlier is what happens when you have somebody who's not affiliated with Bisbee Business whatsoever? They get on, they create it anonymous and they just get in there and call.
You get rid of anything that's anonymous. Just tell people they have to use real, true names.
We're trying to keep this within the business community, will everybody agree?
Yes.
This is business, okay, this is business.
And it's strictly business.
Right.
But we also have to, as we talked about, as we're proselytizing, we're proselytizing, guys. As we're proselytizing this, we've gotta make sure that San Jose is covered also.
Absolutely.
That's a business.
Business is in San Jose, right.
Morgan, in your experience, Slack is not used to sell stuff, is it?
Oh.
It is.
Everything is used to sell stuff. There are, there are a lot of uh, there are a lot of communities that are, that are monetized uh around specific interests, so.
Oh, okay.
Uh there are, there are, yeah, but within usually, the way that it's usually used is within a specific organization. There is now, there, there are, let's say, coaches or um video gamers or whatever, they develop their own, their own workspace and they, and then they, they sell stuff through that, but, but, but the original functionality is that it's within an organization, so usually people in organizations are technically trying to sell each other things. Can I ask you a question? Is it, would it be legal to set it up in such a way that you had to have a business license in order to be part of this group?
Yeah.
The admins could require that.
Would, would, so would that be a?
What about nonprofits?
The only, the only thing is that we would have to let anybody with a business license.
Anybody with.
You'd have to.
A Bisbee business license.
Right, you can, you can have, you can have criteria, but you can't keep, you, you, you can't pick and choose how to apply the criteria.
Do you have a tax ID or an EIN or a present, whatever?
Yeah, quite, you know, we would, as a city, I personally, as a mayor, rather than, I won't speak for the city, would love the fact that you, you, you require a business license to, to uh participate.
I'd be surprised.
Because some that, that don't comply would say, I wanna, I wanna do that. And you go, fine, thirty-nine bucks and you can do it.
I, I think that, I think that was strength since that we wanted this as a business.
We, we one time got a feel for how many business licenses there were, do you remember?
I don't remember how many there were.
I don't remember, it was a lot.
It was a lot though, yeah, I think I still had that list.
Three hundred, something.
Yeah?
Yeah, I think I still had that list.
Three hundred eighty, something like that.
When you unpack.
Yeah, but a lot of them are probably not even here anymore, cause a half the people on the voting boards are dead.
They were act, they were active business licenses.
Yeah.
Those were paid for business licenses.
They were paid for business licenses.
She only gave me active businesses.
And as an example, that was, that was before Morgan, so whoever, I mean, somebody leaves and somebody else comes in, so.
Okay, I, I wanna wrap up this section. We're gonna do a ninety day beta test.
It's a lot.
We're gonna start today on our ninety day clock. Uh Rob is going to determine what the cost of this is going to be, given the, the fact we're gonna be a municipal, a municipality using Slack. Our goal will be at the end of ninety days to determine whether we have a green light of go and no go. And I would suggest that thirty days you have a go, no go slot, and at sixty days you have a go, no go slot. That gives you an opportunity to assess where we are at and do we wanna continue or not. And that's part of the beta test. It's the one thing I know about. Okay, now I wanna move on to a couple other things while we're here. Naina, our meeting on February twentieth, that's gonna be.
At the Torreville.
At Torreville.
Torreville, sorry, I know, I was gonna say it wrong.
And is there, is there a conference room there or something?
There's gonna be one set up, yes.
Okay, great. All right. Number two, on this February twelfth meeting of the working session of the city council, I find this really important. I think that tourism in this city is really one of the only revenue achieving functions of the city government. It is, it is building, bringing tourism does tow two things. It increases our taxes and it also adds a catalyst for people coming to move into our community. So I think when we sit down with the city council on the twelfth, I would like very much, and to notice this obviously, the I Bisbee committee to be there.
Yes, sir.
Um and to be there and recognize as a committee dealing with tourism in the guard community. And that we quietly determine who's gonna speak. Kathy, I, I'm gonna want you to speak as a store owner, as an example. And also, you have the respect of certain members of that council. Other people will have certain, respect of certain members of the council. I wanna make sure that we hit these people in a way that they understand, number one, tourism is our industry in this community. Attempts to bring in other industries for, are really tourism is our industry. And we promote that and make sure they understand it. I understand there's some concerns about some of the council people from San Jose. We have to indicate that we are well aware that their great contribution to the tax base from Safeway and Ace is an important thing for our community. But we also have got to begin to stress as a, as a group, the need for us to work together to build a stronger business community. I think that in keeping with the open meeting law, we've gotta be careful how we do this. But I'd like each of you to think about what you would like to talk about in presenting to this working session. And I would like our members of our committee, if you feel it's appropriate, to address the council at that work session. Coming from, as I indicated, Kathy coming out as a retailer. Rob, you're coming out as a rest and sir. I mean, we, we need to make them very well aware in that work session that we are talking about the major economic move in the city. And obviously Denise will speak about real estate and how the bringing of tourism attracts people who wanna buy homes in our city. And she indicated at our last meeting, we're almost hitting a seller's market, or we may be in a seller's market. So the importance here, as we move forward, is to really make impact at that February twelfth meeting. Given the open meeting laws, we can't communicate with each other, but we can do it subtly, I guess.
You can do it through me.
And we can do it through Naina. Um and we will do it through Naina because I think we have to cut up each of the areas and have people address those areas. David, is that gonna take too much time if we do that?
No, you're gonna have, it, you're, just like everybody else, it's required to have three minutes a person.
Okay, so.
So make it short, sweet.
Short and sweet and to the point.
To the point, and uh if you have any statistics, uh that, that's good. I mean, to say, I can, I can say that um uh tourism uh during our peak season, uh you know, it, the difference is X, um you know.
Is there any way we could find out if Safeway experiences seasonality with tourism?
Sure, I can, I can ask the manager. I, I don't have a problem. I know the assistant manager pretty well.
Because with all these Airbnbs, I'm thinking that might really increase Safeway's, you know, cause people have refrigerators in kitchens and it'd just be interesting to see if they have any.
So I, I, I also think we need to get the word out that even though Safeway is located in San Jose, it's not just San Jose that's shopping there to create this revenue.
Exactly.
Well, no, and I'm saying, I think some of the tourists go there.
And I think there's a misperception out there, Bill.
I agree.
Well, I shop there.
Fifty percent of them are in Sonora.
You know, I'm in the tourism business too.
No, I mean, yeah.
Fred, you used a figure of forty-five to fifty-five percent of the sales tax dollars emanate from tourism. Is that right? Is that the figure you used?
Yes, I, well, I use fifty-five to fifty-eight percent. That's what Robert Carrer and I sat down about three years ago and we were trying to figure out the impact of tourism on the economy. And you can't, there's no hard figures. Um so what we were talking about is the direct sales, there's, there's figures for the direct sales. The indirect sales, the people that own and work in businesses, shop at Safeway, shop at B and D and stuff like that, those are indirect kinds of things. And then the, the invisible but still indirect are people that have um heard about Bisbee through tourism efforts, however that's been, and come to Bisbee and buy houses. And that's a smallish group, but there's been a hundred and seventy-seven houses sold in the last year, the last year thirteen, fourteen months or so. Those people, most of them found out about Bisbee through some kind of advertising, marketing or something.
Or by attending something.
That was, or, or indirectly from marketing, from the sunset or something like that. So all of that was in, kinda included in that when, when we talked about it, but that's, it's not a hard figure, there's no way to get a hard figure that I know of. The treasurer's got some information that, some stuff that she can't divulge publicly because it's confidential. Um for instance, it would be really good to hear, to see what the impact of Airbnb has been in paying taxes. The revenue from sales tax has not gone up substantially in the last two years, in fact, it's gone down a little bit. But the ad, but there's been an advent of Airbnb of maybe eighty-something houses been on the Airbnb market paying taxes, so why?
Is it bed tax or sales tax? Have they both not gone up?
Well, they both, they pay both.
Right, I was wondering if both of them didn't go up or only one of them or?
No, I, I'm talking about the bed tax.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, bed ta, bed tax is not going up, it's going down a little bit, I think. I haven't got the latest figures. So there, there's kind of, you know, question marks about that stuff.
We can use approximate.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's the only thing.
I mean, we're gonna have to modify it by using the word approximate.
You know, Robert, Robert had, you know, obviously much, much more insight than I do in this.
Yeah, those are semi-soft figures, so you're gonna have to say approximate.
Yeah, approximate, yeah, yeah.
But that, it's that kind of thing that we, that we.
The other thing I'd like to talk about while, while we're in general conversation is on the, the director of tourism who's gonna be hired, I would like members of this committee or members of the business community to sit in on an advisory committee, much like we do for the city manager candidates. And begin to, begin to let at least the city manager and the mayor know our thoughts about each of the candidates for this job. As, as I've watched for this, the four, there were four city managers where I sat in on the selection committees. And as I watched that, I saw the importance of the citizen input regarding that. And the, the input of the business community, I think here is really important. So Mister Mayor, I'd like you to consider that as a possibility.
I don't have an issue with that. That obviously would be up to the, to the city manager, cause I will not be, I mean, I doubt if I will be on that. The mayor does not get involved in hiring or firing, no matter what people wanna, wanna say. So um the city manager and the personnel director would be the people that would be doing that. And I see no reason why they wouldn't welcome um.
Input from the business.
A few, a few members of the community to, to be there.
Okay. The other thing is, is the salary set for the tourism director or can that salary?
No, all of this is coming up on, we're talking about on the twelfth.
And the workforce.
Yeah, right, right, right now, I mean, just.
It's up to forty-seven thousand right now.
I think Jen was paid thirty-nine-five.
And Dwayne makes fifty-six.
Okay.
It is too. Well, it's not the same, it requires a lot more education.
No, wait, wait, wait. Wait, Kathy, Kathy, the, what is the salary range for that job now?
Well, right this, the second, it's uh thirty-one-four to forty-seven-one.
And, and if one of the things that we wanted to push wasn't, was more salary?
Under the new proposal, um on, it's uh thirty-six-four to fifty-four-six, fifty-four-seven.
What do you think? Think we should go for more?
I think we should be in the sixties to.
In the sixties?
You know, that's, that's, we also have to, um I ask, I think we've got, I, I'd, I don't wanna look it up right, uh take the time. I ask how much money was there till the end of the year? Cause that's what you have to look at. We have a budget that we have to.
Yeah, I mean, I know it comes down to.
Well, we had money to hire an HR director and give Dwayne a twenty thousand dollar year earnings.
Okay.
Well, there's money there, obviously.
I agree. I mean, money can be, maybe not, maybe not.
That's all I'm saying.
No, no, that is not, yeah, we, we just can't throw this stuff out and, and make it true.
Well, we made the money for the city manager that wasn't there, none of that was budgeted.
Well, wait, wait, Kathy, wait.
That's, that's really not part of this discussion.
It is though, it's part of my community and it's a valid point.
Kathy, Kathy. Sure it is, but hang on a second. Let's, let's deal with the reality of what we have to deal with here. The question is how much money is left in the budget?
I don't, I don't, I don't.
I mean, it's X dollars.
It's X dollars.
X dollars. There's ten thousand dollars in the Economic Development Fund. That could be used to hire, putting money towards a person, huh?
I thought that got wiped out.
No, the ten thousand didn't, twenty thousand got wiped out. But there's ten thousand dollars there that could be used for this type of thing. Just to give you some flexibility, David. Okay, one of the things that we may wanna discuss at the February twelfth meeting is the remuneration for a tourism director. Can we get figures, may, may, maybe I should ask the city manager to have his human resource person give figures for tourism directors of like-sized cities.
He did, and that's where this came from.
That's where it came from, okay. And that's in Arizona figures, you know? The, the second figure you gave us or the, the one in the president's job?
The second one.
The second, the fifty-odd thousand, okay.
Were those communities that base most of their income on tourism or were they cities where tourism was just one of other industries?
I'm, I have a point of order, I'm sorry. I'll let it go a little longer. General comments can't have discussion on it.
I know, I know we can't, I've been cheating, I've been cheating, I, I, I know.
I'm sorry, yeah. I know, and I, I let it a little leeway, but we're getting into the weeds now.
I know, I know, I, I cheated. I will accept a motion for adjournment of our work session.
I move.
Is there a second, please?
No second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.